The webinar. Yeah, start that again now, and then we will get up from here. Up on our website later, but it will be available the info on Facebook. What's that, Wyatt? And on YouTube, we'll get it on YouTube. Okay, so our expected resources. This slide might look familiar because this is exactly the same slide as you saw for our 2020 action plan. We have not yet heard from Congress what the allocation for all of these federal HUD programs will be. And so we are going, we use the same numbers as we had the year previous to make our allocations, which are tentative. And then when we get our allocations from HUD after Congress allocates the funds, it's a lot of using allocate, we will reduce or increase funding to projects proportional to the changes that we see from HUD. There's a lot of unknowns this year because of the CARES Act, partly, we don't know if that's going to impact how Congress feels about funding these programs to the same level since, you know, we got an additional $2.5 million in CBDG funding and an additional $5 million, $5.5 million in ESG funding for the 20, for the CARES Act funds. So hopefully Congress will still feel fit to fund us at similar levels for our annual funds going forward, but we just don't know yet. So this is the plan as we consider these funds. So our priority needs, again, these come from our action plan or our consolidated plan that we put forward in 2019. And there are the seven of them. So they should be familiar, but I would love for you all to take a minute and look at this and then let me know if you have any questions on it. I'll give you until my my clock changes here. Okay, Wyatt, do you see any questions? Okay. Okay, so we will move on. So each of the priority needs has goals that go along with it. So these are the goals that we set forward. So everything that we do has to fall under supporting one of these goals. And then it also ties back to the need. So each goal supports one or more of the needs. And again, we've talked about this before, so we're not going to spend too much time on it today. But please, again, take a second, focus over and let me know if you have any questions. Wyatt, anything? Okay, we will move on. So the majority of our time will be taken up with project summaries. So these are the programs and projects that we are using CBDG home and ESG dollars to fund this year. The first is public improvements. As a, they're organized by goal. So the first goal is public improvements. So this year, we only have one public improvement project, and that is Charles Street Phase Two. So last year, we had Charles Street between 16th Street and 17th Street. You can see where I have highlighted, this is between 17th Street and 18th Street. So anything, or this will include reinstalling the street and curb cuts here to improve, to provide connectivity on Charles Street through this area. This is tied in with a project that will be happening in these lots just to the north of it, which is the Santa Francis Tiny Homes Project. And then we're also looking at how to expand some affordable housing in the area, maybe some single-family housing, just to the west of that Santa Francis project. There's also a wholly name housing project that will be going in further, a little bit further to. So some, some projects coming up there. This will be $320,000, $25,000 in CBDG in there. Doug, I see that you have your hand raised. Can you put that in the chat? And we'll get that question answered, hopefully. Wyatt, do you see what's in the chat? Okay. There it is. Okay, Abby, these are programs funded for 2021. When all the houses and units are built, who will own them? Doug, that's not known yet. It is still a project that's under. No, well, the tiny homes will be owned through Santa Francis, that'll be a Santa Francis project. And then any individual homes that will be built in the future, we just don't know yet. That's something to look forward to. They could be rental homes, but they could also just be sold to people who are eligible, low and moderate income. Does that clarify that as Murphy, as it still is? Yeah, again, I'm sorry, Doug, Doug says OHA City individuals and families. It just, they're still theoretical houses, so it could be any of the following. It won't be the city, but could be, could be any of those. So I am going to move on. So then we have our new construction, single-family housing, and we have a few projects in here. So first is the Choice Neighborhood Target Area Housing Program. We did this again last year. And so that is going to continue. This is in our Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant area that is around 75 North at 30th and Hamilton to Lake, no, Hamilton to Ames-ish, but more limited than that. That's quite rough. So this will be 10 units built by 75 North or another affiliated CHODO. And 75 North has been working with us in CNI for a long time, but they are now working towards becoming a CHODO. That's a community housing development organization. And and they can utilize home funds more easily. There's some fewer things that they have to do to make those homes available to them. And those homes will be then sold to qualified families. And low and moderate income families. So then next is our Community Housing Builder Program. Last year, this was presented as the Emerging Housing Builder Program. So we just changed the name. There's $100,000 CBDG being tied to this. And it will provide for seven units. We had five units in the budget that's in the action plan, but when I was talking with the construction manager yesterday, he said it should be seven. So at least 51% of these units will be sold to low and moderate income clients. And this program will provide funding for site acquisition and prep. So an important thing to note right now is that there is an RFP out for the funds that were released last year. So that RFP was put out on November 6th, and it is due back on December 28th. So if you are a person who works with or, or is a construction company, who is interested in getting into affordable housing, this is an RFP that might be interested, interesting to you because it will provide sites, and the sites have already been selected. The addresses are 3201 through 3221 Corby Street. And the idea is that one builder will be selected to build those homes and then sell them. And we will provide funding for site acquisition and preparation. If you have questions about this, I am not the person to ask, but Louis Wright, who is one of our construction folks, is. And I will put his email in the chat box. We also have this RFP available on our website and on our social media, I believe. So definitely check it out, let Louis know if you have any questions. And deadline is December 28th. Also, this program will use Section Three business considerations. So if you have questions about Section Three, HUD has some really good information about it. And then I'm sure Louis can answer some of those questions. Okay, we have another person that's doing Section Three. And if you have questions about it, go hold me and I will direct you to her. Any questions here? I probably can't answer them because I just don't know a ton about this program, but Louis is your person. All right. Next up is our Scattered Site Info Housing. This is a program, again, that we've been doing for quite a long time. This year, we have $400,000 in home funds for it to address five units that will be built by Jacy Housing. This photo here is a home that Jacy has previously built at 42nd and Hamilton Street. And these will all be around 34th and Miami, so a similar area to where we are having those the emerging builder, the community housing builder program going. Any questions there? And again, these will also be sold to qualifying families. So next is our Single Family Housing Rehabilitation Programs. And there are several of these. Again, these are long-running programs that we've been, that we've had for a long time. So you are more than welcome to ask any questions that you have. So first is the Single Family Housing Rehabilitation Program. Formerly, we have done more interior renovations, but these are now primarily exterior rehabilitations. There are $625,000 in CBDG funds going towards that. I think I defined CBDG earlier, but in case you don't know, that means Community Development Block Grant. And again, those are funds that are provided for housing housing and community development related needs by HUD on an annual basis. So we plan to do 15 renovations this year. And those rehabs are targeted east of 72nd to help maintain housing in our even primarily maybe in RSA areas, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy areas. And those rehabilitations will be provided for low-income homeowners, up to 80% of AMI. These projects can go up to $35,000 per home. And there is there is a lien placed on the property that goes away after five years. So you have that. Folks who have that option should consider contacting Joyce Stevens if they would like to learn more. Okay, Autumn says that the sound is very muffled and hard to understand. Is that something that everyone is having a problem with? I am not getting any responses. No, Wyatt, can you hear clearly enough? Okay. Um. Okay, thanks, Rachel. I will move you closer to my face and we'll see if that helps any because the camera is, or the sound is through the camera. Is that any better? Better? Okay, so I will speak up and we'll go from there. Okay, I put in the chat box Joyce Stevens email if the single-family housing rehabilitation is something that you're interested in. She is the person to contact. She'll know all of the things, all of the requirements, from income requirements to your taxes having to be clear, you can't child support. She'll be your, your contact for that and helping you get registered. Next up is our Energy Conservation and Healthy Homes Program. And I am going to let Wyatt Tool talk about this and our barrier removal program because he is our ever wonderful person running that program. Okay. Um, okay, Wyatt has been muted the whole time. That's, that's not ideal. Um, no, Wyatt, no one can hear you. Yes, that would be fine. Wyatt's going to come over here and tell you all about these programs again. I'm sorry for that. Yeah, I'll go back to ECP.
Okay, sorry about that. So first up is the Energy Conservation Healthy Homes Program. So for this program, it is a program where we make homes more energy efficient. And okay, all right, we're making homes more energy efficient and healthier at the same time. So this program is for homeowners living east of 72nd Street, excuse me, that are low to moderate income. And it's a $5,000 per home. And the typical improvements that we do are things like attic insulation, storm doors, storm windows. We can replace kitchen and bathroom flooring if it's in bad shape with sheet vinyl. Do things like minor wall repair, minor painting, installation of handrails. So it's just things along those lines. And we do a combination of using contractors and our handyman department workers as well. So with that, and by doing it that way, we are able to do a lot of projects and also maximize the budget. We can stretch that $5,000 further because with our handyman department helping out, they are, we're not, we're saving a little bit on the labor costs, so we are able to stretch that budget further. Okay, and then we'll go to the.
You have to click it, please.
There we go. Okay, next is the Barrier Removal Program. So this program is geared towards making homes accessible for people with disabilities. We do making entrances and then, excuse me, our goal is to make the entrances more accessible and then also the interior of the home accessible as well with stair lifts. So on the outside, that can include things like a wheelchair ramp or a platform lift. The platform lift is something that's basically like an outdoor elevator for a wheelchair. We can also do something called walker steps where the stairs are, the entrances are, excuse me, the, the risers for the stairs are much lower, no more than four inches high, and then the treads are deeper. So somebody is using a walker, it allows them to use a walker on the stairs and get up the stairs much more eas- easily. And then for the inside, we can make stairways accessible. So with a stair lift, that can include either a straight run or a customized, customized curved stair lift. So if a stairway isn't like an L shape or a U-shaped stairway, we can make those stairways accessible with a customized curved stair lift. For this particular program, it is actually available citywide while it's within the Omaha city limits and the homeowner is, again, low to moderate income. And that is the Barrier Removal Program.
Thank you. Okay. Um. I would just like to remind everyone that the default is to send messages to all panelists. So if you want everyone to be able to see what you're telling me, then you have to send them to all panelists and attendees. So it's in the dropdown. Um. Michael Van Sant asks if this program would cover rotting window frame replacement? And yeah, and no, this program is not going to cover that. That would be more an exterior renovation program. It could also potentially be the LED program, which we are not covering here. That's an EPA program that we have. And if you have questions about the LED program, please let me know and I can set you up with our LED program. They do prioritize families with children and particularly families with children who have elevated blood flood levels. Um. Doug, I, I'm going to address your question again. I can't say who will own it because these are just theoretical homes. It's something that we would like to see built in the area is some additional affordable housing, but we just don't have a plan for it. There is no one that we're contracted with yet. So there's no plan for ultimate ownership. If someone were to ask to build rental homes, they could potentially build rental homes. And if you do use these funds, any of them, CBDG home, and it would be home more than likely for new construction. There is a requirement for an annual inspection, which Wyatt does a lot of those. So at that annual inspection, you have to be up to code. You have to fix anything or you have to start paying back. And those homes are also then income limited to low-income families. So that's one of the ways that these programs help to address our affordable housing needs, which obviously it is a small drop in the bucket. If you look at our housing studies or our consolidated plan, we know that we are many thousands of affordable units short. This is never going to solve this problem on its own, but that's, that's one of the ways that we work to address that. So if you don't have any questions further on this, I'm going to move forward to our next single-family rehab program. Okay, so the next is the Emergency Repair and Handyman Program. $350,000 of CBDG funds for each of those programs. And they both address the affordable housing need by helping to keep people in their homes and to keep their homes up to code and accessible. So these do usually quite small things. Handyman can do things like fix a broken step. They're both targeted towards low-income elderly people. And so that's, we're, we're just trying to keep people in their homes usable, helping to keep up with those little things. So emergency repair does a lot of repairs to heat heating units, boilers and hot water heaters. It does not typically cover air conditioning. It can also do some mainline plumbing work on occasion, but it typically addresses more of the furnaces, boilers and water heaters. So next is our Roof Repair and Replacement Program. This is something that we work with for Project House Works, and they will plan to do 11 roofs. These target low-income seniors east of 72nd Street. And again, this works with affordable housing to try and keep people in their homes, keep their homes up to code and usable for them. You know, we all know, well, maybe we don't all know, but roof repair and replacement is extremely expensive. So this helps those, those low-income senior families, households to keep up their homes. 50% of median family income is the limit on that. So if you have a low-income senior, 50% of median family income or below and Project House Works can help you figure out if you qualify for that, please let me know. And I can, again, get you targeted with Project House Works. Next is our Rental Rehab Program. So these are rental programs that, or rental homes where the landlord has to bring matching funds. And then we can help them to rehabilitate a home that might be a little bit rundown to help with getting that home up to standard again. So Doug, this is one where a landlord will own it. getting that home up to standard again. So Doug, this is one where a landlord will own it. But it then has to be rented out to a low and moderate income family, and it does have those annual inspections to make sure that they are staying in in line. Just one second, I'm going to mute myself. Okay. So depending on how much money goes into I think I might have a problem on with the Facebook streaming. So if I don't, that's great. And if I do, I'm really sorry and this will come up later. Okay, it's okay. So Michael asks if all of, are all all of the old, the funds generally used for these programs every year. Some years they are, some years they aren't. Sometimes they roll over and sometimes they're reallocated. We look at how much we spend every year and how many units we did. And then we try and make adjustments for how we're going to budget for that going forward. Pat, do you know if all of the funds for the rental rehab program were spent last year?
It just rolls.
Okay. Um, we typically roll it over, but there are some places where we've had projects fall through. Typically not these programs where we've moved money forward into different projects. And actually, I have one of those coming up that I'll talk about. So you can look at our CAPER to see how our outcomes were for the year before. Although because of the time that it takes to do rehab projects or new construction projects, it's not as straightforward as would be ideal. Yeah, and some projects might be multi-year funded. So I know that's not a great answer to that question, but unfortunately, that's, it's, it's not super straightforward. Now, the programs that do use their, their amount every year are really handyman and emergency repair. Those are heavily used programs. We do I think around 650 of those projects every year, maybe a few more. So we're always trying to make sure that we're budgeting and assisting quickly. When funds aren't used, is that a lack of folks using the program? Typically, yes. So again, always trying to do better outreach and engagement with people who might need our services and with people who could refer them to us. And if you would like to be more closely tied to that, again, let me know. And I'll work on getting you tied to the right people. But there are some things that people might not, you know, like with the exterior, exterior program. Some people may not love having a a lien put on their property. So they may not want to do that program. There are barriers to these programs and a lot of those, almost all of those are federal requirements that we can't necessarily do anything about. So that's always fun and we just have to keep doing outreach and looking for more people. Pat, would you like to add? Sorry, I'm reading your comment right now, Doug. We also have a lot of questions and what we are doing to help prevent that is providing a lot of our money towards rental assistance that we receive from the CARES Act. That's not something that we are typically allowed to do with that project or with those funds. But with the CARES Act funds, we have been able to provide funding to rental assistance for up to six months per family. And that has been going through MATCH, the Metropolitan Area Continuing of Care for the Homeless and their Housing Problem Solving Program. That program has already spent more than $7 million in rental assistance. And that's in addition to the CARES Act dollars that the county has been using. And then other smaller programs like the United Way or another one that I heard about the other day that I didn't know about before. You know, having evictions right now certainly is part of the public health crisis that we are all facing. It's something that we talk about regularly with MATCH and with our homelessness prevention programs that we haven't gotten forward to yet. So trust me, it's not something that we take lightly or don't think about.
This is Pat. I just want to address the questions with regard to rollover of funds. Funds don't typically roll over because of lack of use. They roll over because either we've not gone into contract with that agency for that particular project that has been approved. So we may be a year into the actual funding before an actual agreement is written or done or entered into with the agency that's going to be doing that project or program. So that the funds will then roll over to another year, potentially even two years before a project is actually done on that particular funding year. The programs that where we have what's called extra money left over or something like that is very minimal. It usually is less than what is needed to complete a project. So either we will defund it or deobligate it and put it in the greater pot or put it toward another like project. Or projects will be multi-funded. One project will have, for instance, 2019 funds in it and will also have 2020 funds in it so that the project can then be completed. So in the sense of money ending cut dry at the end of that funding year, that's not quite how programs are designed. We usually enter into a year or 18 month contracts. And so the funding does carry over in order to pay those drawdowns that come in during that, those funding year periods. So it's a, we typically don't have a lot of money that's not spent, that just kind of flows. It doesn't, we don't do that because of our requirements with reporting on our accomplishments in CAPER. We do try to be clean and end things at the end of December unless those agreements or things don't allow that to happen.
And that's why I need Pat and she's never allowed to retire. Okay, so I don't see any other questions on the rental rehab program. So we are gonna move forward to multifamily new construction. Oh, no, we're not. We're gonna move on to our Urban Homestead program. So Urban Homestead is something that we can work with Project House Works on. And this is a program where homes, five units is what we're aiming for this year, can be purchased outside of the MRSA. The NRSA's are chosen with several factors in mind, but some of them are the concentration of low and moderate income folks. And one of the things that we don't love to do is further concentrate poverty because that doesn't help a neighborhood progress and add things, businesses, and it doesn't necessarily help people to live in areas where they might have opportunities for further education or job advancement. So if we can do projects that are outside of those NRSA's that help to get low and moderate income home buyers, give them more housing choice, then we are all for that. So Project House Works will purchase and rehab five units, five homes, and then sell them to low and moderate income qualified buyers. This has been a program that has grown over the last couple of years. I think we started with one unit. So now we are doing five. And that's great. We have been doing it and now it's growing with Project House Works. So that's wonderful. Now, if you have no questions, we will move on to multifamily new construction. All right. The only multifamily new construction project we have this year is actually in Council Bluffs. The city of Omaha is in a consortium with Council Bluffs for our home funds. So that means that they have access to a portion of our home funds and we work in concert with them to get those funds used within our two jurisdictions. So they are proposing to, it's considered new construction, although this is an existing building, to take this historic building in the middle of Council Bluffs and make a 19 unit mixed income apartment complex. Three of those units will be funded with $250,000 of home funds. And so those will be income limited or income restricted and available to low and moderate income families. And they will also have those inspections that they have to do every year to assure that they're being maintained. This project is at 530 West Broadway and it's very exciting. Last year, there was a project with Council Bluffs for a new construction project and that hasn't gotten going yet, but that is still in the budget. And will provide an additional 97 unit apartment complex, I believe, some number of which will be affordable housing. So onward we go. Next is our multifamily rehabilitation. So one multifamily rehabilitation project this year. This is a historic structure in Omaha and it will be developed by Five Kings LLC with $355,000 of home funds. They are bringing an additional $1.5 million of private funding and perhaps Lytech as well into this project. This is a historic building, as I said, at 2214 Florence Boulevard. And it didn't include a ton of photos here, but while this building is fairly sad right now and in pretty poor shape, it is beautiful. And I'm so excited that we can help to bring a building like this back to life and especially as affordable housing. So this is very cool and we'll get rolling on this later. These actually are old funds that were previously deobligated. So this is for certain funding that we do not have to wait for HUD to tell us what our allocation is for this year. As soon as they approve our 2021 action plan, we can get rolling on this. So that may actually be a little while yet because we do have to wait until we know what our allocation is going to be before HUD will approve our plan. But we can go through city council, we can have this plan ready to go so that we can hopefully get rolling a little bit more quickly than we have in the past. You may recall that last year we were doing our 2020 action plan meetings in January and February and this is, we've been moving towards our timeframe that we'd prefer to be in. So the idea is that Congress will allocate these funds in October and we'd be submitting our plan in November. But that hasn't happened for quite a few years. Quite a few years. So we're hoping to get better and hopefully someday Congress will also get more timely. Okay, next I have our job training and preparation programs. Again, these are some programs that we've done. Some new, some returning, and of course, our tried and true Step Up program. So Step Up, we started funding a year in advance a couple of years ago. So these $400,000 will actually be used in 2022. And Step Up is aiming to serve 325 people. Those people are 16 to 21 years old. And it helps to get them in workplace experience, helps to pay their salaries so that these young people are also earning some money. The mayor's office also funds Step Up with a $500,000 grant in Woolley and then they have another $300,000 in private funds that they bring to this program. So then two other job training and preparation programs, and actually kind of one other, but it's in a different category. So there's our Workforce Education and Innovation Initiative, not ours. It is from the Latino Center of the Midlands. So this program will be somewhat similar to Step Up, but serve 16 to 24 year olds, smaller scale for now. They're reaching 30 people with our funds this year and targeting South Omaha. Step Up initially started targeting in North Omaha, but they've moved to a broader scope. And then the next is the Catholic Charities Micro Enterprise Program. So they will provide for culturally sensitive, supportive, formal training, technical assistance, microloans, financial literacy, and computer training to prepare clients for micro enterprise, small business. And these funds will also be utilized in 2022 for both of these programs. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, slum and blight elimination. I know this is not a phrase that we necessarily love to use, but this is the phrase per HUD, so we're going with it. No one likes to think of their neighborhood as blighted. But it is the term of art, I suppose. So we have two programs in slum and blight elimination, which is the NRSA demolition program and the NRSA code enforcement. The demolition program has been going on for several years. This year, we are putting $400,000 of CDBG into it for the demolition of 26 buildings. This will include residential and commercial structures. These buildings are chosen off of the, a list that is prepared by the Code Enforcement Department Division. And so we work with them to establish eligible properties for our funds that are then used to demolish those eligible structures. The next is the NRSA code enforcement. This is the second year of this program. So this $100,000 of CDBG pays for a full-time city inspector who works in our NRSA's to do code enforcement. So this can be for rental housing, it can be for owner occupied properties. And that way, you know, there can be a long wait with code enforcement. So we're aiming to not have as much of a wait. And also hopefully to be able to connect people with our other programs like the Handyman Program or our exterior rehab program so that if you are a low income person who needs some assistance getting your property back up to code so that deterioration is limited, stopped, hopefully we can connect you with those programs by having this code enforcement person. Next up is our, let me know if you have any questions on that and I can go back. But for now, we're going with slumming or with our financial and housing education programs. The first one is the only one is our homeownership counseling. This is again a long running program that works through family housing advisory services, $75,000 of CDBG funds and to assist 35 people. Every person who purchases a city funded home has to go through this program. This is, this is a part of a federal requirement, right? It is a federal requirement that people who are buying these homes funded by federal dollars go through this program. And this is also funding for 2022. Started funding that a year ahead, a bit back. Any questions? Okay, on to home buyer financing. And again, the, this is funded for 2022. $75,000 CDBG again. Again, we have to have the private mortgage financing and the second mortgage for the city. Omaha 100 has been doing this for us for many years. So it is not a new program, it is continued. Melissa Potter asks, is the homeownership counseling program only for family advisory? It only is run by family, family housing advisory? Yes.
Well, no, there's other, okay, what's the requirement is it has to be a hard certified agency that does the counseling?
Okay.
It's, we just contract, have been contracted, FAS to do that. But there are other credit advisors.
Okay. So what Pat is saying is that the requirement is that the program be HUD certified. So if a family who was purchasing one of our homes preferred to go through a different organization, no, they have to go through that. Okay. So our financing program is FAS or our counseling program is FAS. So if you're buying one of our homes, you have to go through FAS because that's who we contract with. There are other HUD accredited programs. There are other HUD-accredited programs that would also be eligible for those funding. We just work with FAS. So yes, but other programs have it, or other programs are also available. Does that make sense? The funding is only for the homeownership counseling? Yes, that is the only funding that we have with FAS right now. It is only for our program, yes. Okay, so with the homebuyer financing program, gonna move along on to our homeless services. And let me start out by saying, I know that you don't have your award letters yet, and I am so sorry. Okay. Youth Homeless Prevention, this is something that we are funding for the second year with YES Youth Emergency Services to do outreach to youth at their youth outreach center, $77,552 of CDBG. And the goal is to assist one hundred and fifty people here. So YES runs a center off of Harney Street, I believe. And this is a place where kids who are experiencing homelessness or housing instability, I say kids, but it really goes youth up to about twenty-four years of age, I think, can drop in and receive services of a pretty broad variety. So if you need to take a shower, or if you need to get a coat, you can get a coat. If you need help with putting together a resume, you can get help with that. You can get access to services, you can get counseling. It's, it's a really great center that serves a lot of youth in our community. And we work with YES quite a lot on, on other things. So that is what this funding is for, and that's with CDBG. The next thing that we have here is the Way to Work program. So this is, was a mayoral initiative that started with the Salvation Army in Omaha Parks and Rec a couple of years ago. And we are now going to be putting, that is CDBG dollars that's in there, I didn't get that CDBG in there. So almost $87,000 of CDBG funds to serve six people. So that will provide for ninety days of employment. The employment is paid for by Salvation Army, but then the folks who are working through that program will work in the Parks and Rec Division. Though they have ninety days of employment while they are also searching for housing and permanent employment. And during that time, they will receive some case management that includes job counseling and resume development. So that's not, this is not something that we have funded with CDBG prior to this year, but it is a program that's been going on for a couple of years now. All right, next is our emergency shelter operations. So in 2020, in 2020, we had to take a little bit of a diversion, and Santa Frances very kindly agreed to replace their regular ESG dollars with ESG CV dollars, which I am still working on, Linda. And that money was then rolled over into the Stevens Center. And Stevens Center was not eligible for the CV funds for some other reasons. So in 2021, we will be returning to our normal ESG shelter split. So we have $224,000 for shelter operations, which will go to Santa Frances at approximately $168,000, and Stevens Center at approximately $45,000. And then Catholic Charities Domestic Violence Shelter for $11,500. This is a split that we've been doing for a while and are returning to. So again, these numbers could change depending on the allocation that HUD provides to us this year, which we're hoping they don't change. And we also have HMIS, Homeless Management Information System. This is run by the Institute for Community Alliance out of Des Moines, and also with that here. And the HMIS system is really great. It backs our coordinated entry system so that anyone who shows up at a touchstone for our homeless services center can start to be evaluated for eligibility of services so that we know who we're serving, how many people we're serving. And ICA has been such a blessing to me as we have been doing our reporting for the ESG CV funds. They are super, super helpful and have been really critical as we've changed over which HMIS system we're using this year. So $13,000 is their request, and it is what they will be given. Okay, Housing Placements is still homeless services, but it's a different goal that we put it under sometimes. So we will move on to that. And you just let me know if you have questions about the previous, and we will address them. So first is our tenant-based rental assistance program, which goes through OHA. It is $344,500 of home funds. So it's, it's essentially a rental assistance program, but the tenant will find their landlord, and it's scattered site housing, not properties owned by OHA. And they can, people in the program can receive benefits for a maximum period of twenty-four months. So we are aiming to support forty people with that money. And again, this is a program that we've been doing for a very long time. Okay, and then we have rapid rehousing. So rapid rehousing is again funded with emergency solutions grant dollars, ESG. And we have two agencies that we've been funding for, again, a long time, that do rapid rehousing. And that's Heartland Family Service and Together, Inc. All of the people who enter these programs are referred to Together and Heartland Family through the community queue, which was formerly called the By Name List. And it's based largely on, it's, it's based pretty solely on chronicity of homelessness. There might also be some consideration for veterans. And at this moment, there's also consideration for being over the age of fifty-five and also having a chronic health condition. And that's so that we can get people who are more at risk for COVID out of the shelter and into permanent housing where they are exposed to fewer people and can quarantine or isolate as they need to more easily. Quarantine and isolation space has been a big issue, not just in our homeless service community, but also just throughout the community. I was on the call with the Health Department this morning, and that's something that we talked about as, as being a need throughout. So that's, the rapid rehousing programs are really important. And we put a lot of our CARES Act funds into rapid rehousing, about an additional million dollars. So that's all I have for our current programs. Now we have what is coming up next. And Lisa is going to talk about our upcoming housing planning programs. Lisa, if you, y'all, please let me know as quickly as you can. If you can't hear Lisa, and I'll have her come over to my desk if, if she can't be heard. So Lisa, on to you.
Okay, thank you. I hope everybody can hear me okay. Okay, great. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the other things that we're working on and some plans that are in development and that will be in development in 2021. So you all may be, most all of you may be familiar with LB-866, which is the Municipal Density and Missing Middle Housing Act that was approved by the governor on August seventeenth. And so the purpose of that act was to encourage cities to develop zoning regulation requirements supporting higher density and affordable missing middle housing development. So a couple of the things to know about that it requires us to do is to send a report to the legislature on the availability of affordable housing and the incentives that we currently have for affordable housing. We have to submit that by July first of 2021. Then we also have to develop and adopt an affordable housing action plan by January first of 2023. That action plan has to include several goals that we need to develop, and those goals would cover things like the amount of construction of new units, the percentage of zoning that allows multifamily and middle housing, and the use of funds, including HUD funds, and the development of other incentives. So we would need to create goals that address all of those things in our Affordable Housing Action Plan. It also provides for the creation of the Middle Income Workforce Housing Investment Fund. Those funds are to be used to encourage the development of workforce housing in urban and underserved neighborhoods and communities. The definition that's used in the legislation says that workforce housing means housing that does not receive federal or state low-income housing tax credits, CDBG, or home funds, or Affordable Housing Trust Fund funding. So this will be of importance for you to help contribute to what goes into this Affordable Housing Action Plan that we submit to the state because it directly impacts the funds that can and cannot be used and how we're going to develop those goals. And it also happens to coincide with the development of our next five-year consolidated plan. So that's, you know, 2023, we're going to be needing your input on that. And then the other thing that we're going to be needing your input on is the Housing Recovery Workshop. You may recall that we included community resilience in our current five-year consolidated plan. And we learned during the displacement of all the residents at Yale Park Apartments that we needed to create some sort of recovery plan. And also with the flooding in 2019, it became very apparent that we need to. And so we included that goal in our consolidated plan to create a housing recovery and resilience plan. And we were in the early stages of organizing a workshop with the help of the Douglas County Emergency Management Office. And unfortunately, all of that workshop planning got put on hold because of the flooding. And then, of course, COVID came along, and so, you know, it's disrupted everything for everyone. But we're happy to tell you that we are organizing those planning meetings again for that workshop, and we're hoping to hold the workshop this coming fall. And the workshop will address temporary and permanent housing recovery and resilience planning within organizations that provide housing. So for those of you in housing, you will be hearing from us and getting some invitations to that workshop. And you'll be hearing more about both the Affordable Housing Act that we, that we need to develop that plan and, and the report that we're going to be submitting in this workshop in the coming months. So please, you know, make note of those and let us know if you have any questions about any of them. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, very much. All right, one last thing that we've got is a reminder, well, two last things, but this reminder that our 2022 CDBG and home workshop will be coming up in late January or early February. We don't have a date set yet. It will also more than likely be on Zoom. First time we'll have done that. So this is a workshop that covers how to apply for CDBG and home funds. ESG is so specific that we don't include ESG in that, although it's likely that there will be some changes to our ESG application this year. But if you have questions about what kinds of projects are allowable, you can have those with us anytime. We are always happy to talk to you about eligible projects. And, you know, while we take our applications typically from February to April, you are welcome to work on an application to submit at a later time, but just talk to us. And then watch out for our, our announcements through social media. And if you are not on my mailing list, I promise I don't spam you. I just email when we have documents available for public comment or when we have public meetings like this one. It's a really, really low-tech solution to a mailing list. I blind carve and copy you into my mailing list. So if you would like to sign up for that, I don't have a form. You just shoot us an email to hcdcomments@cityofomaha.org, which is also where you can submit any comments that you have on this plan or any others that come forward. And Manny, I see you, and I will add you to the mailing list. And then I'll get you signed up on that list. I know, Manny, you just, you miss hearing from me so much. So the public comment for this document, which again is available on our website. If you have any questions on it, you can contact me. You can submit through hcdcomments@cityofomaha.org. You can give us a call, and if you say I have questions about the action plan, our front desk will get you to the right person. It might be me, it might be Pat, it might be Lisa, it just depends. But the, the comment period for this document ends on December 21st of this year. And after that, we'll be working on it, getting into council in early January so that when HUD tells us how much money we have, we can fairly quickly make those changes that we need to make to the budget. Unless it is a drastic change from the funding that we proposed, we won't be holding another public meeting about it. We'll just be making those changes and notifying the grantees. And then we'll go from there and start with contracts. So if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them. Wyatt put our website address in the chat. It's planninghcd@cityofomaha.org. So HCD used to be our, our name, and it's not anymore. But you can still go to planninghcd@cityofomaha.org and find this plan and many others. And if you have any questions, please email me, pathcdcomments. Give us a call, and we will answer to the best of our ability. Any comments also, any comments that get sent to us will be also added to this plan. And that's all I have for you. So have a fabulous day, if you don't have any questions, and stay safe.